Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for joining us for today's town hall. We'll be starting in about five minutes as our guests enter the Zoom room.
A moment of silence. It's like a moment of silence.
Yes, before everybody gets started, I guess. Look, they have muted.
We're live and on. Good afternoon, fellow Ospreys, moms and dads, other family members and friends. For those of you who do not know me, my name is Harvey Kesselman, and I'm the fifth president of Stockton University. I'm also an alumnus of Stockton and a member of the university's very first class. During the nearly fifty years that I've been here, I've gotten to know thousands and thousands of students. What I do know about Stockton students is this: They rise to the challenge, they care about their environment, and they care about one another. That's why when I say mask up, back up, and wash up, I know you will do it. That's what we all need to do to conquer this virus: Mask up, back up, and wash up. Today, we've asked two extraordinary individuals to have a conversation with you about COVID-19. Let me first introduce Laurie Herndon, the Atlantic Care CEO and President and an alumna of Stockton. Among her many duties, she is responsible for overseeing the Atlantic Care Hospital on our campus here in Galway, their hospital in Atlantic City, as well as a number of urgent care centers and other facilities throughout the region. I would also like to introduce Atlantic Care's infectious disease doctor, Dr. Manish Trivedi, who has deep roots in this region and who has been at the forefront of the battle against COVID-19 every single day since March. You will find him to be fascinating. So with no further delay, let me turn it over to Laurie, but first, mask up, back up, and wash up. Laurie?
Yeah, thank you, Harvey, and welcome, parents and students. We're excited to have you back in the community, and what we're going to do in the next hour is just really have a dialogue, answer some questions, and hopefully if you will level set what we've been experiencing. Dr. Trivedi and I have been on the ground, working in this life with COVID for months now. And we just want to, you know, provide, if you will, the personal awareness and insight based on some of the things we've been dealing with, as well as, you know, just reassure you that we are, we've been working the whole time, we've been working side by side with thousands of our Atlantic Care colleagues and just, you know, provide that update. So I just, you know, maybe to get started, Dr. Trivedi, he was, he was in the hospital today. So how are you finding things? We're definitely seeing a trend go in the right direction.
I think so. I think, you know, when this first started, we, we had a lot of cases of COVID in the hospital, upwards of eighties to the nineties in both campuses. We've, we're proud to say we have five cases currently in both hospital systems.
Combined, so.
And so that's a remarkable testament to what we've done in our healthcare system, but as well as the community as far as keeping the cases low. The mask up, back up, wash up mantra is something that we take very, very personally, and we certainly love how it's being adopted in the community as well, and it's showing through our numbers.
We've taken care of, you know, as the major health system in the region, really all the, all the cases. We've worked closely also with Shore Medical and Cape Regional and the Southern Ocean County Medical Center up in, up in Manahawken. So we've all been really coordinating our efforts. We've been working, you know, very closely with as the science has evolved. And also just want to reassure everyone that, you know, we have been, everything actually pretty much, all of our clinical services are back up and running almost to pre-COVID levels. And one of the things that we've been incredibly proud of is how well we've adjusted to, as I call it, life with COVID. So maybe we'll, you know, we have a lot of other things we can talk about, but we'll just cover a few prepared questions that we've already received from, from family members and students. But I guess the, the one that I'm always interested in, and there's been some press about that today, is so what's going on with the vaccine?
Sure. So, you know, we've been, it's a struggle right now to, to come up with a vaccine, but we've done a phenomenal job thus far. Typically, when you make a vaccine, it takes five years, seven years to really perfect it. But with all the resources from around the country, around the world, we're finding that we're able to expedite this. There's three major vaccines that are in phase three trial. Phase three, meaning we're testing in the general population to see the efficacy with, against COVID, and they're very promising. We anticipate by the end of the year to have vaccines, at least for healthcare providers, those people who are frontline workers, as well as people who are high-risk populations, those elderly's in nursing homes, and then slowly rolling it out further to the general public.
And Moderna is one of the companies that you're watching, right? That sounds promising.
There's a few, few companies right now, but Moderna seems to have a lead on, on some of the other companies, just because of the resources they have and how far they are in that phase three trial.
That's excellent. And I guess so, one of the other things that's also on everybody's mind is testing. And especially as people, you know, come back to campus and come back to their dorms and just thoughts on testing and we, but we've done a lot of testing at Atlantic Care, but we've also noticed and we've followed the science, which has been very important to us, to not test just for testing sake.
Yeah, and you know, there's several types of testing. The one that you typically hear about is a PCR test, that's that nasal swab that people talk about. And that really tests for an acute infection, an active acute infection. The antibody test that people talk about, it's more so for an epidemiologic purpose, meaning have you been exposed? How much prevalence is this virus in your community? But it won't really help you in distinguishing, will this give me immunity? How, how good are these antibodies? How long will they last? Things like that, to get antibody tested for, isn't really what it's designed for. I'm not sure we're ready to utilize that information just yet until these vaccines roll out, and then we'll have a better purpose for those.
One of the things that we've worked really hard in this community over the last several months is to organize a testing strategy for our, you know, for this region. And we have testing available every day across our Atlantic Care health system. It varies in different locations based on, on, on the time. But we're also moving towards, and you've been working with us on this, is we're going to have a testing, a dedicated COVID testing site in Egg Harbor Township, which is right across from Lowe's. And that will be open on September 21st. And what that will do is really create a whole different level of what I'll call consumerism for COVID testing. We recognize that when people become anxious and feel that they've been exposed or, or have symptoms, more importantly, have symptoms, we need to be able to get them tested. So we will be offering a twenty, less than a 24-hour turnaround time for that ability, and we'll work closely with the administration here at Stockton if that's necessary. We also, you know, there, there has been some challenges around testing as far as getting, you know, a script. And if you have a script, you can get a script and you can just go online and schedule. So we, like I said, we have testing seven days a week now, but we're going to, on September 21st, we're going to have even more accessible testing to our community. I guess just a couple of other questions about, if you're not feeling well, should you get tested or simply go to class? Or, you know, how, how should you handle it? If I'm, if I'm a student right now and I'm not feeling great, what, what would you suggest?
Now, there's different avenues of how you should think about testing and what you should do. Really, if you're not feeling well, if you feel symptomatic in any sort of way, the best thing to do is to stay home and quarantine. You know, going out and going to classes, I know that we have a lot of responsibilities, especially when you're students, you're trying to make a great effort. And in doing so, when you're ill, could put other people at risk. So if you do start having symptoms, to stay home is, is the most advisable thing to do. Now, that being said, should you get tested if you're not feeling well? That's the best time to get tested is when you're symptomatic. Right now, in September, moving into October, November, we're starting to creep into what's called the flu season. And there are different things, not only COVID-19, that can mimic the symptoms. And so flus, allergies, we live in a very wooded area, so there's mosquito-borne, tick-borne illnesses. So certainly seeking professional help from your primary care provider, from the school facilities, and get some guidance with that, I think is important. But again, if you have symptoms, I would certainly stay home and seek, seek some advice professionally.
I guess one of the things, we're, we're both wearing different masks. And maybe, Dr. Trivedi, the, the point about the surgical mask which you have on versus my, my neighbor made this, and I've been wearing this for the last several months. But question would be, talk a little bit about which mask for what environment? And then, you know, if I'm exposed or if I become in contact and I have my mask on, how should I, how should I be reacting to getting tested or how, how should that work?
So there are several types of masks. You probably see people wear bandanas, people wear gaiters, is what they're called, where they wear around their neck, the cloth mask, and then of course surgical masks, and then further healthcare professional-grade masks. You know, the surgical mask we typically use for patient care areas, they're designed for single use. So when you go into a room, seeing a patient with COVID, you can take that mask off and dispose of it. The cloth masks, the gaiters, the bandanas are more designed for in public areas. You know, there was some study recently about gaiters, the scarfs that we wear on their neck, and that perhaps they can propel droplets across further rather than protect you. That's been kind of disproven a little bit now, so they're, they're more accepted again. But nonetheless, when you have a mask on and you're on a daily basis using that, going out, you should wash it every day. Using, washing it through the washing machine through a regular cycle is the most important thing. So keeping a couple of them are really important. Whenever you handle the mask, never handle it from the front of the mask. Of course, that's where all the droplets can be. You want to handle it from, from the sides when you pull it off and then dispose of it, if you have to dispose of it or put it in a basket so you can wash it later.
And if, if so, let's just pretend you have COVID right now.
Sure.
How, how much risk am I? And we're both wearing masks. What would you advise? And we, we've been working on this a lot at the hospitals because we are in contact with a lot of different people. So it's evolved. Our science and thinking has evolved.
You know, when, when we first started doing this, we weren't really sure what, how the purpose of the mask would be. Is it to prevent breathing in droplets? Is it to prevent expelling droplets? What we now know is that the masks do both, really. They prevent breathing in some, but more so prevent you from expelling them onto other places. So when two people remain at a social distance of six feet, let's say, or even let's say you're closer, as long as you have two people wearing masks, the, the risk of transmission is exceedingly low. It goes almost down to 1%. And so the likelihood, if you're face-to-face with me, who let's say has COVID, and we have an extended conversation, is still exceedingly low to 1%.
Yeah. And I think that was something that we, we actually had a very low infected employee rate over the last several months. And as I mentioned, we have, just to give you a reference, we have about 6,000 employees, and we ended up with less than 100 people who were tested, who tested positive. And of course, some of those people were in harm's way in a, in a very dramatic way. And so, you know, part of the masking up and washing your hands and social distancing, really, you know, it seems so simple, but it is really three of the most effective things that we have going for us. So I guess just some questions, just to, I guess, for moms and dads out there and guardians, we have the most up-to-date testing at the hospital. And our testing results are available within fifteen minutes and up to forty-five minutes. So we have, and that's not readily available in the community, but we have the best of the best, wouldn't you say?
Obviously, so, yeah.
And so if somebody is sick enough to end up needing to come over to the hospital, we can get those results, you know, under an hour. And, you know, that is something, and we're, we're still, there are still some restrictions for the ability to, you know, we just can't test if a thousand people walked in, we couldn't, we couldn't test everybody, but we are getting enough testing equipment, right?
Yep, that's correct.
And can handle, you know, a situation as, as it evolves if people do have, you know, more serious symptoms. I guess a question here about how long does the virus live on surfaces?
Sure. So on surfaces, typically, the contempt, the risk of, let's say, becoming contagious off of surfaces is still very low. But that said, it can live up to surfaces, and there were several studies about this. They say up to seventy-two hours. Now, this is all dependent on the type of surfaces, and the testing that they did on the viruses were very specific and very detailed. And so because of that, they couldn't really distinct, distinguish whether this was pathogenic, meaning the amount of virus left on a surface, could that be enough virus to cause an infection? And what they were finding now more recently with studies is 24 hours at the maximum, but the risk of getting infected from, let's say, using a doorknob or using a desk or table is still very low. The best way to prevent any of that, of course, is whenever you touch any type of surfaces, not to touch your eyes, not to eat without washing your hands, don't rub your mouth. Keeping your hands away from your face is really important to prevent this virus from inoculating, meaning getting infected by this.
And we're doing a lot of wiping things down?
That's correct.
Absolutely.
Disinfecting surfaces as much as possible.
I did see, we're here on campus, so there's a lot of gel all over the place.
Everywhere. And we typically, whenever we go anywhere, we tend to inspect things before we get pulled into a place, and we've noticed that here specifically.
We sure have. Just a question about if I have an, an older family member, you know, how should I handle that if I'm going to class or I'm now back on campus? What advice do you have?
So, you know, when you're, when you're, let's say you're living with this family member every day on a daily basis, the best precautions you can take in those circumstances is to maintain that hand hygiene, wearing the mask when you're in public spaces, making sure you maintain a social distance. Now, if, if that's unattainable or difficult to do, and you're still around like an elderly family member, what you would do is wear the mask at all times. If you're concerned that maybe you could become asymptomatic carrying, or, or you might have some low-grade symptoms, always wear the mask when you're around those, those types of populations. But if you're taking those precautions and you live together, you may not necessarily have to wear the mask all the time, as long as you know that you're taking the appropriate precautions.
Good advice. I guess, you know, also pregnant individuals, any advice of how we can ensure their safety?
So pregnancy really doesn't put you at an increased risk. It doesn't drop your immune system at all to, to make it a worst-case infection or anything like that. So pregnancy really is treated like the general population. Sure, there are added security measures that you need to take. Let's say if you become infected with COVID, meaning hydration, you want to stay hydrated during any type of infection, but you also need to do so just in general and caring for the baby. So, but in, but in a whole, pregnancy won't really limit anything.
Yeah. And I guess just around, this has come up, and I'm sure as people come back to the bigger buildings, the ventilation systems, some things have been written. What, what's the science saying about that?
So when we first learned about this virus, we knew that this was a droplet virus. What that means is it spreads from the mouth, from sneezes, coughs vocally, and it can spread up to three feet. What we're finding now, as we start to do more research on this, is that it's somewhat of a hybrid. It's not necessarily an airborne virus, which means it can spread through the air and linger in the air. So through a ventilation system, this virus does not travel through ductwork or anything. At maximum, if you were in a room with someone who was, let's say, quarantining, infected, hasn't left the room, and there's no circulation, it's thirteen feet, at maximum, the travel distance, but it doesn't travel or linger in the air. It stays in the air for several seconds and then drops to the floor.
So in essence, it's not going to be sucked into the system and blown all over?
No. And they've actually done studies on that in Nebraska to try to see if that would be the case, and that's been proven wrong.
I think this is a question everyone has, as we all, you know, have family members and loved ones going back to class. So if somebody tests positive in my class, what should I do?
Yeah. So, you know, as long as you're, you're taking the precautions that everybody has laid out, tests, people are going to test positive perhaps around you in the community. And so you have to take the precautions for yourself, not to touch your face, not to touch your mask, to avoid being in close quarters for long periods of time. So that physical distance is really important. Washing your hands during those circumstances are really important as well. But really, the masks, as we kind of mentioned earlier, if two people are wearing that mask, the risk of transmission is really low. And so the likelihood of you getting an infection, despite, let's say, you and I sitting there.
So we're sitting in class for an hour right now.
Yeah.
And you have COVID. I'm not necessarily going to be getting infected. We're, they might make me aware. But of course, I'm sure the leadership here at Stockton will make some, they'll, they'll do some assessment.
Exactly.
I mean, I think we've learned that. Every situation sadly is not the same, but it's good because we have to assess the actual situation.
Correct. And that's, that's the important thing, is they have a screening tool set up so that you can screen these people to see what really the risk factors are. But again, the masks, as long as they're worn properly, they have to be covering your nose, have to be covering your mouth, not to wear it under your chin or from the side of your face. Really, to keep that coverage is important.
Yeah. And we are, you know, people are outside, and that's a safer place to be, correct? So that would also be an option for people to be out and about.
Correct, yeah.
And get some exercise and all that goes with that. I guess, you know, one of the other transitions for, you know, the community is, is that we've really been dealing, as I've mentioned before, with all aspects of this. And, you know, we really haven't had any situation that we, you know, every, as you mentioned, our caseload has gone down steadily over the last several months. But as far as your health system here, we really have no anxiety about managing our cases, right?
We've been, we've been, I guess, welcomed to the experience, and we've, we've become very experienced with treating COVID patients. And because of that, we have a very tight system going now, from initial inspections to, to rooming patients to, to therapies, and, and we've been very successful with that.
How's the steroid therapy going? I'm reading more and more about that. Decadron is, is working out, right?
Right. So, so, you know, you'll hear a lot in the news about therapeutics. When we first started experiencing this virus, there was a drug called hydroxychloroquine plaquenil that quickly climbed to, to the forefront of therapy and found that really didn't meet the expectations we wanted. So that kind of fell to the wayside. Then we started hearing a little bit about something called plasma, where you donate blood with antibodies and you recirculate that. And the theory behind that is that it would expedite you to develop antibodies in case you were infected. And that, you know, has been having a mixed picture as far as efficacy is concerned. There was this magic drug called remdesivir, which was thought to be the drug that was going to quell it all. And what it really did is just decreased the length of stay in the hospital from fifteen days to eleven days, but not really so much with the symptoms. But the, the one drug, the, the, I guess the oldie is a goodie drug, is Decadron. It's a type of steroid that we use. And that's been the new drug that we've been using, and it's shown some, some better, I guess, effects with respiratory distress. It helps alleviate some of the, the flaring that you would see with the virus itself.
And we're also seeing a different type of patient now. They're younger, right? So we're seeing younger people get infected. And gratefully, they're not as ill, but some of them are, you know, sick enough at times to come into the hospital. What are you seeing in the office, anything?
Yeah, no, similarly. And, and that's like the alarming thing that we're, we're starting to see, you know. As the summer kind of progressed, we started to see a younger population, that, that the teenage to the twenties to the thirties, because of the, the congregations of people socializing. And it wasn't so much what you would expect, these big raging house parties with people falling out of windows and such. It was really these small clusters of people. Even up in Philadelphia, you saw some people, these small clusters of, of, of young adults that would, would hang out together, feeling comfortable that they're friends and they kind of know where each one has been. And those were the people that were actually spreading it amongst each other, and people became very ill during those times, not nearly as ill, let's say, as people with comorbidities. But this virus is very, very interesting in that regard, that it affects people differently. So you can't really just say, hey, I'm young, it's not going to affect me, it's just a cold. You have to really take it very seriously.
Yeah. Gratefully, we're not seeing as severe, but we do every once in a while have a very sick young person.
That's correct.
And I guess that's the point, that it's serious and that we need to respect it. Just a little bit about the flu vaccine. I know at Atlantic Care, we're going to be working very closely with our public health colleagues and anybody who will join us, because we need people to get the flu shot. Sadly, one of the statistics is less than 50% of the adult population last year got the flu shot. So it's going to be really, October 1st, all over Atlantic Care, we will be offering the flu shot. We want to make sure, and we'll work with our Stockton colleagues around, you know, making some, some provisions to be able to encourage our student population, correct?
And that's, that's really important too, especially as we move into flu season to help protect yourself. There's been some studies recently that other vaccines, like the flu, like chickenpox and such, have some added benefits against COVID. So certainly it would, it would be helpful.
I guess here's a, a point about what's, you know, the challenge here is, is once you get into your little pod that we call, but if you're going to go home and come back and forth, that could be a little bit of a challenge, right?
Right. That's why maintaining.
Any advice on that as far as how young people should be thinking about this?
No, and absolutely. It's similar to, to what we do is going into the hospital and, and at work, when we're at work, we, we wear our appropriate gear, so to speak. And that, in the general population, is a face mask. Wearing that mask when you're around other people, even if you're going out to, let's say, a party or, or going out to a, a cluster for school projects and such, you want to maintain that mask because that's what's going to help protect your loved ones at home who are, who are doing the same thing.
Absolutely. This, I've just been seeing this in the press too about sewage and toilets and any comments about that?
So there was some concern about with shedding of the virus, can you shed it through, through excretions? And the answer to that is yes and no. In, in, when, in certain secretions, you can, but in, usually in the general, no, you can't. And so sewage can, you can detect it, but the testing again is so specific that you're not testing necessarily active pathogenic virus. And so you may detect virus in the stool, but it's not something that can be contagious at all.
Yeah. I guess just, you know, in general, a lot of theories about is the virus mutating? What are you, what, what are people thinking about that now?
So it's interesting, viruses are not just, hey, it's COVID-19 and that's the strain. They have little genetic mutations on the virus that make it seem or act slightly different. And when we first saw this virus, we got an overwhelming respiratory response. People had respiratory illness. Slowly, it would progress, and we saw that other people would present with GI disturbances and not really respiratory complaints. What we're finding is those little genetic mutations are what kind of give you a different clinical picture. But as far as a, a huge mutation that like splits off, similar to what you would say the flu does, or similar to different viruses like HIV or something, it's not like that. They're really minuscule, small little alterations that can change some clinical aspects of it. So when it came down to making a vaccine, you didn't have to make a reinvent a vaccine for different strains. The one vaccine really attacked the main virus itself.
And I guess, Chris, I'll turn to you. One of the questions here was really around how Atlantic Care and Stockton are working with, with our students and the population here. Anything that you want to comment on that?
Oh, absolutely. So we, we contract with Atlantic Care for, with our Wellness Center to provide physicians for our students to be able to see here on our campus, both here in Galway and Atlantic City. We also are partnering as it relates to COVID-19 testing for students who show symptoms. So students are able to acquire a test at one of the Atlantic Care urgent care locations here in Galway and also in Atlantic City. So we're, we're pleased to have that partnership in place to help ensure the, the health and wellness of our student community.
And just so everybody to know, Dr. Trivedi here is the person who whenever there's a question, we call him. And he will be the physician sort of at the, at the end of the line here, if there's any concern or, you know, any, if there's just, you know, somebody needs to have something explained a little clearer. You've been, you've been working around the clock. He finally did get some vacation time. He's the father of two young children and is married to one of our nurse practitioners. So he was, he had a lot of experience, and so he's been the go-to guy for many of us as we've, you know, worked our way through all of this. I guess, you know, just some questions, I'll hand it back over to our Stockton colleagues about some specifics for all of you. And we'll take some additional questions that are coming up on, on your screens.
Yep. So we're going to ask a bunch of Stockton-specific questions that you're asking, but I also encourage you to put in the Q and A specific questions for Dr. Trivedi that can expand on what he's already asked, or general health questions. One question in the chat asked, just to follow up on our partnership for testing. We have telehealth visits, so it doesn't matter if the student is in-state or out-of-state. All of our students are eligible to have a telehealth visit. And then an order will be written if they believe, if we believe, if the doctor believes that they need a COVID test. So there's a contract that all students are eligible to receive, so you don't have to worry about where you would get testing and how quickly you'd be able to get those results.
Okay, Chris, you know, we have a lot of questions, both in the chat and just every day, about the Daily Health Pledge, something that we launched, for those, for those of you out there who aren't aware, we launched the Daily Health Pledge for employees back about a month ago. And it asks a series of questions about your symptoms, about your contacts. And it's really your first step to kind of personal responsibility each day before you come onto campus. Could you talk a little, we launched it for students late last week. Some questions, some students, you know, wanted to know a little bit about what, more about how it works. What are the, what are the penalties if you don't do it? And do they have to do it if they're 100% online, not coming to campus? So could you talk to us a little bit about that?
Sure. So I'll answer the second question first. The answer is yes, even if you are off-campus. And we want all of our community members to take the Daily Health Pledge for a number of reasons, primarily to help us, help you remain healthy, and it's just a good check-in. It takes like five seconds. I see mine every morning in my email, and it literally takes five seconds to complete. But it's extremely important nonetheless. The way the pledge works is that when students complete it, it gets channeled in a number of different directions. So, for example, based on a student's response to, to some of the questions, the response will go to our Wellness Center for follow-up. You know, for example, if a student has tested positive elsewhere, or they're under quarantine, or they're feeling some level of symptoms, they get channeled to our Wellness Center who follows up with the student. Either A, they will work with their primary care physician at home, if they're at home or here, they can, they can schedule a visit with our Wellness Center, whether it's a telehealth visit or with one of our practitioners on-site to, to determine whether they have any further symptoms. And then we, we, we work with them from that standpoint to determine. And then we, we, we work with them from that standpoint to determine the next steps. To the latter part that Dr. Davenport mentioned, so students who do not want to complete the Daily Health Pledge. What we, the first thing I want to say is, and I want to encourage everyone, all of our students to do is complete the Daily Health Pledge. That's the first thing. However, there are some students, we've got some questions about, well, what if I just don't want to complete it? Well, that sets a, sets in another process in place where we, a member of our Care and Community Standards Staff will contact the student just to get clarification as to why they do not want to complete the Daily Health Pledge. And certainly we take it, we take it seriously. So students are just really, do not want to complete the Daily Health Pledge and do not want to comply with what we've asked them to do. Then, then there could be some disciplinary sanctions connected with that. But we're hoping that our students just do the right thing as a member of the Stockton community and complete the Daily Health Pledge.
Thanks. And actually, I don't think that we introduced ourselves, did we? So.
Oh, you, I'll start. Chris Catching, Vice President for Student Affairs. Work with many of the programs and services here that promote student health and safety, leadership development and academic support and retention, a whole bunch of other things. So work with a lot of great people here at the university to do all of those, all of those things for our students.
And I'm Michelle McDonald. I'm the Interim Provost and Vice President for Academic Affairs. So when we get to your questions about your classes, about your faculty, about the library, about the computer labs, those are the questions I'm going to answer.
And I'm Susan Davenport. I'm the Executive Vice President and Chief of Staff. And I'm just going to run a few more questions. So speaking of academics, Dr. McDonald, as, you know, we have a variety of modalities running right now. We have fully online, we have hybrid courses, and we have face-to-face courses that are all going to be starting on Tuesday. How are the instructors handling requests for special accommodations? For maybe somebody is immunocompromised or they're, they're not feeling well? How is that going to work if they're not able to come to class?
Sure, two, two-part answer. So I'm going to step it back just a little bit because there are some questions about whether all classes are taught every way. They can be, and the answer is no, that would be a Herculean effort. What I can tell you is that 65 or 64% of our courses right now are fully online. About another 23% or so are hybrid, 10% are face-to-face, and then 4% or so are internships or independent studies. And the reason I'm telling you this is we really tried hard when students were registering for classes to let you know as far in advance what these modalities were going to be and to ensure that you could find the right kind of class for you that met your needs and was in a method that you preferred. That being said, Dr. Davenport is absolutely right to ask the question, what happens if I need an accommodation? What happens if I become sick? And the good news is we already have protocols for those kinds of things. So the university has a procedure, it's called Procedure 2030, that governs course attendance. And there's some very specific ideas about what to do for short-term absences and long-term absences. And the biggest difference is we normally define a short-term absence as about a week. But obviously, given the nature of this disease, we're asking our faculty and our students to really consider it for that two-week period when quarantine might be necessary. That being said, when you need to be absent from class, it's still important as a student that you work with your instructor to make sure that you know what the assignments are, know what, what tests there might be, how they can be rescheduled, and, and keep on top of your studies as best you can. Because the goal really is to have this be, if possible, a temporary break, as you would for any illness if you became sick, if you caught the flu in any other year, and make sure that you can stay on track towards meeting your academic goals for the term.
Thanks, Michelle. I'm going to switch to a question about masks in the classroom. So we did this, we did this town hall for our employees and faculty last week. And I did the top 10 mask questions because I think they can't talk about masks too much. And so, but we're going to focus on the classroom. Are there guidelines regarding masks in the classroom for students and for their instructors?
Yes, it's very simple. Wear one. All faculty and all students are required to wear masks in class unless you have a medical reason why you cannot. And if there is a medical exception that you're seeking, you need to work with our Learning Access Program. They're the ones, as, as you would for any other accommodation. They're the office, and that's based out in Chris's shop in Student Affairs. But they're the office that you meet with to determine whether or not you have a medical exemption and so they can give you the appropriate paperwork so that you can document why you wouldn't be wearing a mask in class. But really, just to, to echo what we've heard earlier from, from Dr. Herndon and Dr. Trevetti, the best way to make sure that we keep ourselves and each other safe is to make sure that we keep our masks on and make sure that we stay six feet away from each other. So yes, masks are absolutely required in the classroom.
So what should we do if we're walking down the hall and we see somebody without a mask on? How should we handle that?
So the first thing that I would do is not necessarily assume that it's being done intentionally. This is still, believe it or not, even six months in, there's times when I go to take the recycling out. I'm halfway out the door and I realize I don't have my mask on. So the first thing you can do if you see someone not wearing a mask is simply to ask them to please put their mask on. There's lots of ways of doing this without necessarily being confrontational. You can say, stop, are you aware of the fact that you weren't wearing a mask? Or could you please put your mask back on? We've even made it simple. If for some reason you lost your mask or you forgot your mask, we have a range of stations across the campus in the Academic Center, in the library, in the front desk of the Atlantic City John F. Scarpa Building, Academic Center. There's a range at the, at the ITS Help Desk where we can provide you with a mask if you've lost one or didn't bring one with you. Because really, again, that's the best thing you can do. Protect yourself, protect each other, and make sure you keep the mask fully on.
Thanks, Michelle. I'm going to switch over to Dr. Trevetti for a moment. We have a question in the Q and A about, another one about vaccines. So let's, let's get, be really optimistic and say there's a fully working vaccine on January 1st. And our semester starts January 18th. For, I don't know if that's right, but I'm just making that up. What would the likelihood be or what would the process be, do you think, just theoretically of distribution of vaccines? How quickly do we think that we'd be able to say vaccinate our student body if we wanted to do that?
Yeah, so you know, it all depends really on how much, the vac, how many vaccines they produce. Really, they're going into overdrive right now to produce vaccines. And all of these companies are, are producing at the same speeds. And so I do think we'll have enough vaccinations to, to move forward. The problem is just distributing it. And now you may have read in the news recently that the CDC just released to certain states and cities to be prepared to, to kind of distribute vaccines more efficiently because they anticipate that same issue. So let's say January 1st, we went live. I would anticipate, New Jersey's been phenomenal as far as getting resources out to different counties and such. I do anticipate that the vaccine would be fairly quickly available to us.
That's great. The follow-up question that I'll answer is whether or not we'll require our faculty, staff and students to take the vaccine. We haven't determined that yet. We believe that there might be legislation that will require it, as there are for other different kinds of illnesses. But we'll, we'll see, we'll have more information for you as the semester goes on about what the process will be. And if there was exceptions, how you would file for them. But right now, we're just really hopeful and encouraged by the progress on the vaccine testing. Chris, I'm going to ask you about visitors on campus. Can you talk about whether or not students are allowed to bring visitors on campus for the fall?
Well, very simple answer, the answer is no, you know, and for all of the reasons that we've been, you know, speaking about today to promote a safe campus. And so what student, what students would ask is why? Well, you know, we're, we're trying to monitor all the members in our university community as best as possible. It's not a perfect, perfect strategy. It's very difficult to monitor those who are visiting our campus who are not part of campus community. So we, our policy this semester is that there are no visitors here on campus in our residence halls. I would like to add to this particular piece, I want students to understand this other part about. So attending or hosting gatherings of any size and where we stand on that. And we are really adamant about, and very serious about students not hosting gatherings in their residence halls on or off-campus or attending those events because, or those types of gatherings because they put the entire community at risk as well. And we're extremely serious about that. What I, what we've shared with our students via email last week was, you know, err on the side of caution. When in doubt, ask, ask a question, ask someone before you act. Because our, we have to be extremely serious with students who violate those policies because they, they can potentially compromise the health and wellness of our, our entire community. And they, and they will face immediate severe disciplinary actions if they, if they violate those directives. So please, students, please work with us, please listen to us, speak to your, for those who live on campus, speak to your RAs, they are, that's what they're there for, other professionals, faculty members here on campus and the like, other student leaders, they will share that information with you. But most importantly, follow what it is that we say, read your email. All of the things that we're sending you are not ju, not just to fill your emails. They are to educate you, to help you be safe and healthy individually, but also promote the health and safety of members of the campus community. And we need your support and help. And we, we've spent a lot of time talking about what you can't do. What I also want to talk about is what you can do. We have an array of programs and events here on our campus, both virtually and in-person with, with appropriate social distancing in place. There is no shortage of activities for our students to participate in, to build community. And in this particular period that we're in right now, building community is part of health and wellness. It's, it's a little bit more challenging given the circumstances, but it's not impossible. So we, we encourage all of our students to participate, clubs and organizations, virtual programs and events, some of the outdoor activities that our colleagues in athletics and recreation are promoting. Get outside, run, take advantage of the good weather for the next couple of months. There's an array of things that you all can do, but more importantly, listen to us and understand why we're asking you to, to partner with us to promote the safety and health of our campus.
Thanks, Chris. I want to talk a little bit about both our protocol for when somebody is positive and also then what, you know, what can you expect to find out? If we, if your roommate was positive, for example, and then a little bit about contact tracing, a word that none of us really knew six months ago, and now we talk all about it. So I'm going to start and then I'm going to ask Lori and, and Dr. Trevetti perhaps to just expand a little bit on what your experiences have been with contact tracing. We've been fortunate up to now that we haven't had to do it. But I do want to say, as we have more and more people enter into our community, we shouldn't be surprised that we have some positive cases. That's, the trends have been, and what we want to do is mitigate that as much as possible. We absolutely want you to stay. We want to be able to have a really successful semester, and that takes all of us to make that happen. So that's why we have things that might seem draconian, like no visitors, because we so much want you to stay. We've been working with our Atlantic Care partners and with the other state colleges around the state to look at what are some of the decision triggers that would cause us to close. So there would be things like the, the trend right now is down, down, down. If the spike started moving back up and we had 14 or some days, we don't, you know, there, there's not an exact science to it. But there's a certain number of days where, where, where cases are going up and we're not able to re-flatten. Or if the hospital admissions were up, emergency room admissions, things like that, that would draw red flags. We would also be concerned if our isolation housing, which is, you know, our residence hall was reaching capacity. That would be a concern to us. We also have to follow state mandates. So the state of New Jersey and the Atlantic County Division of Public Health dictate as well. If they feel like things are not safe for us to stay, then we would close. So it's a really complicated process, but I want to assure you that we are tracking this data every day on a dashboard, looking to make sure, even before this, you know, this courses have restarted, to make sure that we're making the right decisions. So if, if somebody, if we find out from the Atlantic County or from your daily pledge that somebody is positive, there are a process of contact tracing will, will get underway. And so if somebody calls you and says, I understand that you were in contact with Susan Davenport and you didn't have a mask on, please cooperate. There's not going to be a penalty for that. What we're trying to do, we have a good, we have Good Samaritan rules within our code of conduct. We want to be able to keep track of, of who was together, find the clusters and keep, and if you need to self-quarantine, we want to be able to help you do that. So please cooperate with us as we have these contact tracing efforts. However, we, as we get positive cases, we are, we will put them on our website. There's a new tracking on our, within our COVID-19 resources on the web. But we're not going to be able to tell you that Chris Catching in your history class was positive yesterday because his privacy is, you know, is, is important as well. So I know that everybody wants to know the exact details, but that's not something that we're able to provide. I think, you know, we keep saying the backup mask-up wash-up because you really should expect that everybody is positive. If you walk around and take precautions as if everyone is positive, then you'll have your mask on all the time and your risk level will be very low. But Lori and Dr. Trey, could you talk a little bit about your, your efforts with contact tracing and how that has been working?
I would just start, I think, Susan, you, you really laid it out there. We need everyone to cooperate. And it's not that anything has, you know, anybody has failed. And we've had, you know, we've had to do a fair amount of contact tracing. And, you know, one of the things that we learned early on is some of the, what I'll call the, you know, general areas where people would gather and eat was some of our areas where we actually saw what we believe were some of the spreading of, of the disease. So, you know, knowing who you're with and being aware of your environment. And again, keeping in mind that everyone that you come in contact might be positive is, is a really good rule of thumb. We've gotten better at contact tracing, I would say, as everybody has. And, you know, we handled a lot of our own contact tracing internally. We worked with the Public Health Department though as well. So I don't know, maybe anything you want to add?
We have like an epidemiology team that kind of goes and does contact tracing and exactly that. We, we had some tracings in areas where people would congregate, especially staff lounges where people would share food and such like that. So we had to really adapt our policies according to that. But the process is exactly how you laid out. Really, we reach out to people who may have been exposed to, to let them know that they need to monitor their symptoms. For those people that were high-risk, we had to have them self-quarantine for at least 14 days and making sure they monitored their symptoms throughout. You know, it, it becomes tough on, on a hospital system to, to lose employees, but at the same time, to, to be, the, the first thing is to just be as protective as possible of everybody. And that's what we had to do.
Yeah, and I think just the reality that sometimes, you know, just the questioning and just being in it to understand that nobody's trying to create new problems for anybody, but that we need to gather, we have to do what we call that clinical assessment. And that will really then drive what the recommendations are.
That's right.
So again, if we're sitting in a class like this and, you know, this may not require any other action other than an awareness. And, but then again, if we were, you know, if we learned that there was more closer contact or if somebody wasn't wearing a mask or, you know, fill in, fill in the gaps, those, those recommendations would evolve from, you know, what was assessed.
Thank you so much. Just want to clarify something I had said a moment ago. I said if the campus would close, of course, we will not stop offering our education. We would just go fully remote if we had to. Hopefully we won't. But if the decision was made, it would be that we would go fully remote if our students had to leave the residence halls. Okay, speaking of things that students can do on campus, Michelle, can you talk us a little bit about students who are looking for quiet spaces to either view a Zoom class or just study in the library or use a computer lab? What, what do we have open?
We have, we have quite a bit. So these are questions that have come up quite a bit. If students are, and I'm going to try to cluster some of the questions in the Q and A. Somebody was asking, are you having any classes face-to-face? The answer is yes, a limited number. But if you have a class that's face-to-face or a class that's hybrid and that hybrid section happens to be on campus and your next class in the next time period is a Zoom class, you're going to want to have a space where you can go, maybe a computer lab you can plug into. So what we've done is we have reserved a number of classrooms and they're spread throughout campus in variety of different wings, both here and in Atlantic City. Regular classrooms where you can study quietly, computer labs if you need to log into a Zoom class to make certain that you can move from class to class between modalities and do so seamlessly. It wouldn't be fair to ask you to leave your face-to-face class and then have to hike it back to your residence hall or hike it off to a Starbucks if you're an off-campus student to plug into your Zoom class for obvious reasons. The library is also open. The library is operating under the same sort of strictures according to the state as public libraries, which means we're limited to 25% occupancy. So we are going to be tracking how many students are in and out of that space. But I also want to hasten to assure you that we have created new, different kinds of services to help support both students and faculty who would like to have access to the library resources. So you can now go to the library website and request those materials that you'd like to pick up. They will pull them for you and have them available. I want to say it's curbside except it's an interior building, so it's more of a hallway side pickup that you can have for your, for your faculty and students and in a secure drop-off area when you're finished. So the library will be open, the computer labs will be open, and there will be study spaces available to try to support students and faculty as much as we can.
Great. Chris, can you talk a little bit about what dining will look like? We were pretty happy to see that the state had. pretty happy to see that the state had loosened some of the restrictions on indoor dining. And so we immediately moved from just a grab-and-go, grab-and-go to some indoor dining options. Could you talk a little bit about that?
Sure. So we'll have, students will have access to the array of dining options that we have, both here in Galloway and Atlantic City, certainly within the context of, of our state guidelines. And for those, those who are current students and are also our new students in Wing cafeteria over in Atlantic City, the, the dining area there, our campus center, all of the different options that we have here on, on our campus will, will have, will be available to our students so that they can certainly have access to meals, but a little bit different than it normally is, but certainly not what it would have been prior to us getting a little bit more leeway. So ma, major part, food is a ma, has always been a major part of the student experience from the beginning of higher education, 400, 500 years ago, and it continues to be now. So we look forward to being able to serve you. And, and the other part about this, as we continue to have the availability of our food assistance program for students who, who, who may have some limited access to meals, we have food pantries both in Dean's Students' Office here in Galloway in the Campus Center, and over in Atlantic City in the residential complex. And our students are able to access groceries and food there, they're able to get meal vouchers and the like. So we, we provide access to meals for our students under all circumstances.
That's great. Lori and Dr. Trevetti, I have a question for you. If we have a student who's exposed to a COVID-positive person, would we require, and they got, so they were exposed, they know that they were within, for more than 10 minutes, they were unmasked with the person, and they were tested and cleared, so they're negative. So they're exposed to somebody positive, they get tested and they're negative. Would you still recommend some degree of quarantining? And could you talk about how much, or, you know, what the guidelines are?
Yeah, so that's been an ongoing discussion that we've had before in the past. When you get tested, you're tested negative at that moment. It doesn't mean that you don't have the virus still incubating. So if you're exposed, do you need to be tested at all? The answer probably in that circumstance is no. What I would do is quarantine in that circumstance, at least for 14 days. You would be considered a high-risk potential exposure at that point if you're unmasked face-to-face with somebody for a longer period of time. When you go and get tested, and that's where the confusion sometimes comes, is you get nervous, and people say, well, let me go get tested tomorrow to make sure I don't have it. And that's kind of false, because it can take up to 14 days. On day 14, you can test positive and start to develop symptoms then. So that would be the approach.
Okay. We're, we're running out of time, so I'm going to ask a question or two. But I want to assure everyone, for those questions that we haven't got to that are in the Q and A, there's two steps that you can take. One is to look at the very expensive Q and A that we have on our website, because a lot of the questions have been answered there. But if they are not, we are constantly updating it, and we'll take these questions, we always do after every town hall, and answer them and put them in the Q and A. But before we move, before we close, Chris, talk to us a little bit about refunds. Some students are concerned, especially students who are fully online, that they still need to pay fees. Could you talk about some of the decisions we've made around that?
Certainly. So, well, first, first, I want to address the, the, the fee question. Why, why are you paying fees regardless of whether you're, you know, taking courses here on campus or remotely? And the answer is, you know, the fees still fund the services that we provide for our students, remote and, and also in person. And that's really important. So you think about our student activity fee, when you think about our health, we've been talking a lot about our health services here in this conversation. Well, our, our health fee helps pay, pay for that as well, so that our students have access to it. So the fees are extremely important, and, and that's why students still, still pay them. However, for students that, for students who are, are 100% remote, they, they will get a credit for their transportation fee at some point in time during the course of the semester. So that's, that's really important to, to know. But in general, th, these are very valuable resources for our students, and it's, all the things that we're talking about are funded by your fees, and we use them well to serve you well.
Thanks, Chris. There's a bunch of questions that came in about if we do have to go fully remote. Hopefully, we won't. But our expectation is, if we went fully remote, students would get, in the residence halls, would get a prorated refund of their housing, same as last time, and that we will maintain housing for students who are housing insecure or have other reasons why they need to stay on campus. So I want you to leave you of any anxiety about that. They will still, you know, we, we feel like we know how to close now, and we know how to go fully remote. What we're learning to do now is how to reopen.
Yeah. I think that's real thing. I appreciate you mentioning that, Dr. Davenport. And that's extremely important. Again, many of our students need access to, to housing regardless of the, the operational circumstances of the university. We, you know, we learned valuable lessons during, during the course of the spring semester when, when our students had to go home. And some students, a substantial amount of students were, were here, and they had, you know, had access to housing, they had access to technology, and had access, access to food to continue their studies. So that's, that, that's what we are focused on, to serving students regardless of what the circumstances are.
Michelle, do you have any? I do. Just the, the last question. I've, I've been scrolling through the Q and A, so sorry if it looks like I'm reading at the same time that I'm listening, because in point of fact, I'm reading at the same time I'm listening. But I just want to reassure, there's been a number of questions about what happens in a classroom setting if a student becomes ill, what happens in a classroom setting if a student needs to temporarily do their work remotely or be in quarantine. And I just want to reiterate, we touched on this slightly, but just to reiterate again, this is, this is an opportunity. We have practices in place for when students become ill. This is not the first semester when students will be ill. So the, the primary thing you can do as a student is to make sure that you stay in contact with your faculty member. Let them know, right, that you're going to be away. The university will also be letting them know, but for security reasons, not necessarily for this particular reason. So let them know that you're going to be out of the, of the classroom, let them know what assignments you need to make up, so that you can work with each other to build a plan that allows you to successfully complete each term. This is, this is going to be something that we're going to be contending with all fall long. But having students sick in class is not something that's new to Fall 2020.
Yeah.
Thanks. Go ahead, Chris.
You know, my, one thing that I want to share with our students and our families that support them is, you know, there's, look, we're in the fall semester right now. The weather is still good. There's, being outside is a good thing. You want to, you know, hang out and connect with your friends. There's plenty of space here. I've, you know, learned being here right in the middle of the forest, it's plenty of space here, with the, within the appropriate protocols, you know, hang, hang out, talk to your friends. But you can do that outside, and there's plenty of, plenty of space to do. There's plenty of activities. I said, I'll say what I said earlier. Please listen to us. Please, please listen to us. Ask questions. There's no shortage of educators that are here to help you. When in doubt, ask us, and, and certainly mask up, back up, and wash up.
President Kestman, would you like to close for us?
That would be very nice. And it's not a forest, it's a Pinelands National Reserve. Okay, and?
With a lake, the lake, the lake that's behind Dr. Davenport. That's our lake.
I'd also like to thank Provost McDonald and Executive Vice President Davenport, but most importantly, Lori Herndon, she's a Stockton alum, and all of you out there should really be proud of that fact, that, that, you know, many of us, many of the Stockton graduates go on, have made a major difference in this region. And Dr. Trevetti, I mean, we're honored to have him with us today. They've been with us throughout, and they have been with us. Atlantic Care has been a partner with us almost since our founding. They have an urgent care center in, in Atlantic City, along with their city division of the, of the hospital. We're all trying to give this the best you, the best possible experience that you can have. We need you to be a partner, though, a genuine partner in this. We want you to mask up, back up, and wash up to keep everyone safe. And then soon, this will be behind us. This will be the most incredible, 50 years from now, you're going to be talking about this experience in this year. And, and, but we want you to know how much we value you, and how much, how much we're behind you in your success. So be well, be safe, and we'll all see you very, very soon.